I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Sorry that we were late to our own meeting. Just had a lengthy work session before we got here, so thank you for your patience and starting late. Our first action tonight is our agenda approval. Council members, are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? If not, we will proceed with the published agenda. We have one public announcement this evening, and it's an invitation to our Memorial Day ceremony this coming Monday. The city of Chanhassen and the American Legion Post 580 is proud to host our annual Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 30. Please join us as we honor those who gave their life for our great country. There will be cemetery services that will take place at Leach Cemetery at 7:30 a.m., followed by Chanhassen Pioneer Cemetery at 8:15 a.m., then to St. Hubert's Cemetery at 10:15 a.m. And then the Memorial Day ceremony will take place at City Center Park at noon. Major General Eugene R. Endriati, United States Air Force, will be joining us as our keynote speaker for that ceremony. The event is free to the public, and we invite all Chanhassen residents, friends, and family to attend this very important event. We hope to see you there. Next, we have our consent agenda. Tonight, we have consent agenda items D1 through 11. Yep, D1 through 11. All items listed under the consent agenda are to be considered to be routine by the city council and will be recorded as a single motion based on staff recommendation. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Are there any items that the council would like to consider separately? No? All right. May I get a motion to approve consent agenda items D1 through 11?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDonald. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Next, we have visitor presentation. Visitor presentations are included with each of our regularly scheduled council meetings. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter that is not specifically on the agenda may step to the podium. Please provide your name and address for the record, and then please address the council. You will have five minutes to present your item. If your request includes an action item from either staff or council, please complete a citizen action request form so that we may follow up with you and your request. However, if you are simply making a comment and there's no required action, a form does not need to be completed. Please know that we do not take up these items during our meeting this evening. And finally, if you have handouts that you'd like to share, please hand them to one of our staff members. Are there any people here tonight for visitor presentation or just the public hearing? All right. Thank you. Next, we have our fire department and law enforcement update. Chief, you up first?
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is our, the Fire Department report with statistics from April. We did respond to 75 calls for service in April, with 57 of those served by staff station. You will see a little bit different report this month as we did do away with the day-only calls, which were basically the small staff that we had, as well as a small contingent of folks that we had available during the day coming in. As of April 4th, with the full-time staffing during the week, we've now switched that all over to duty crew calls. Out of the 18 general alarms, 15 came in on non-staffed weekend hours. Three fire responses was an apartment fire in Excelsior, another commercial building fire in Excelsior, and then an outside trash fire at the Avian construction site that was extinguished. Total medical responses for the month, as I continue to report out on those, we had 46 responses, with 26 of those, the fire department arriving prior to Ridgeview ambulance. And I broke out some of the actual actions on scene for what we did, which was 22 of those were basic interventions and assessments of the patient. Along with that, we did not respond to 23 low-level medical calls that weren't in the auto-start matrix for the fire department. The big differential between the day-only and the duty crew is when we are in duty crew status, which is now during the week during the day. That expands our auto-starts as well to calls that we would go to because we're staffed. So I, we have been tracking the non-starts, and it is relatively about stable at 25 to 28 a month that aren't reaching the level of starting, starting the fire service. Major activities on May 6th, we did have our annual firefighter banquet, which firefighter Aaron Bush was named as the firefighter of the year. Thank you to Mayor Ryan and councilperson McDonald for attending and being with us that night. As a special note, on Saturday, part of my duties here as your emergency management director is to run functional exercises. So we were approached probably two years ago by Westwood Church that requested if we could do some kind of mass casualty response incident training with them. Due to COVID and just major planning functions, it took two years to pull that off. So on Saturday morning, we started, some of us started around 6:00 a.m., but we had about 17 patients mulaged, which meant real wounds and the whole makeup and all of that provided by Ridgeview Medical. There was about 180 total people on site with 60 to 70 role players provided by Westwood Church, with the remainder being first responders, about 32 to 35 of your firefighters. The Carver County Sheriff's Office, Chaska PD, Eden Prairie PD, South Lake Minnetonka PD, also all responded. So with a contingency. So just an awesome opportunity for our young staff to work in an environment that we can control and set something like that up. I think it's difficult for probably most to understand the gravity of trying to put something like that together with all the moving parts. So I'm exceptionally proud of our team for pulling that off. Anna Fatturi knows more about emergency management planning than I'm sure she thought she would know in a year. So we've been, and she did a fabulous job with that as well. So thanks to our partners in law enforcement and especially Westwood Church, that with their security team, their EMS team, and how we interfaced all together and moved quite a few patients in a very short period of time. We'll be providing an after-action review, and that will go to council. You'll be able to read the things that we learned, which helps us train better, identify some gaps in our procedures and policies, and those things will come out. As well as, I've tasked Ari and Drew, who spent the day with us, with flying the drone and a lot of pictures. I've got to see the first round of pictures, but I think we'll have a nice memory catalog of what that event was. I've got a lot of positive comments from our staff, and it was a pretty important event to pull off here in the city. So more to come on that. The NFP required host testing and ground letter testing is happening this week, actually. And then we will be on-site, as the mayor indicated, with helping out with the Legion Honor Guard transportation that we have with the cemetery. It's been a longstanding practice of the fire department to assist there, as well as staffing the, staffing the memorial service with some medical responders. We've done some training. I won't go too far into that. The one thing I'll call out is firefighter Fatturi and Chief Nutter did attend a DHS licensing up at Camp Ripley, which is a state requirement, so we can do an actual Department of Health inspections for our daycare. So we're not required to do that, but it's an opportunity for us to be able to serve the community in a smaller way, where folks don't have to go out and find or wait for the state fire marshal's office to get that licensing. So it's something that, it's required that they participate in that, but the main function is so we can support our daycares here in town, both residential and commercial, and continuing to work with them on their licensing. So lastly, we did start with the National Research, Minnesota Safety Research Institute on driving and hands-on driving. So we all went through the actual class, and 11 of us went up to St. Cloud last, last two weeks ago now to actually run the course. So great driving for emergency responders when, as we start to learn and continue to respond in the Community Code III, which is becoming more of a challenge with the roadways and the folks on the roadways and how they treat emergency vehicles. At least over my 30-some years of response, things are changing. So I did also lay out a different format for you in the report with the community risk reduction activities. So you'll start to see, I won't read this off to you if there's anything that interests you or you want more information. Just get ahold of me, and I'll give that. But we've got all the fire inspections that we've listed out. Those are going to continue to come to you as well as we'll start tracking those for some trending. All the plan reviews that are actually being done and the public education events that we're now able to support again with the staffing that we have during the day. And again, code enforcement, the code enforcement specialist activities will also be listed here in that community risk reduction. So you'll see more to come as far as we're still continuing to expand the information we're providing you on what's going on on a daily basis. With that, I can stand for questions.
Council, any questions for Chief? I just would like to say thank you for your hard work and leadership in preparation for the mass casualty event. I mean, as a community, you always hope and pray that nothing like this ever happens, but at the same time, you hope that the people that are responding are prepared. And I know that's something that you took very seriously and put a lot of time, effort, and energy into it. And as a great leader that you are, I just want to let you know how much we appreciate it. So thank you for pulling it together, and I really look forward to reading that report. So thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Lieutenant?
Mayor, Mayor, Council, good evening. Report on April activity for the sheriff's office. On April, we had 825 patrol calls for service, 54 AFNs, 19 BFNs, 359 non-criminal, and 393 traffic category events. In April, we did a major targeted enforcement detail promoting safe driving and visibility. So we saw significantly more traffic stops than your report for the month of April for the sheriff's office. April was hands-free violation targeted month, and so we saw 250 citations we wrote last month for the sheriff's office as a whole, which made 1,385 traffic stops. 32 of those were hands-free violations. In the city of Chanhassen specifically, we made 296 traffic stops, 72 citations. 15 of those, 32 were for hands-free violations in Chanhassen. We also made five DUI arrests out of those, that targeted enforcement. Tracking metrics for fraud, theft, and domestics that I typically track for city council, those have been relatively consistent for the month of April. Our mental health calls for service dipped down from 16 the previous month to eight last month. So that is a good thing. Our change in response to medicals with duty crew for the fire department was implemented on April 4th. And so I looked at the 30-day window prior to that implementation date, and we're down from the sheriff's office to medical response from 78 to 58. So those are being taken by duty crew for the low-level medicals that don't require a full response from everyone. So a couple items to note. Again, thanks to Chief Johnson for leading on the MCI at Westwood Church. So I also want to thank our surrounding partners from law enforcement specifically to sending 23 officers, I think we had. So that was a pretty major endeavor that was put out on Saturday. Couple of other items to note that I spoke with the city manager about this morning. The community outreach program for registering your surveillance camera with the sheriff's office. It's going to be called Community Watch, and that should begin very soon. I have a meeting tomorrow morning to talk to our county IT staff to have that added to the sheriff's office website. So when that comes out, I will get that over to the communications team and have that advertised through them. Beginning today, our towards-zero death enforcement will be seatbelt restraint for the next month, and that goes on specifically through June 5th. And I looked up earlier today, as of today statewide, we have 117 fatal crashes statewide. We're on pace for 488. Just to give a reference, last year, we had 497, which was not a number seen since 2007. So we're on pace for another tragic year for fatal crashes. So we are out enforcing traffic laws pretty consistently. To support our community outreach efforts, and we're partnering with, let's see if I can get this up on, change. This is, ink is just barely dry on this. I got it a few hours ago. We're, we're partnering with Change the Outcome to do a community drug presentation to talk about the epidemic that we're having with opioids. And we'll have a guest speaker from the DEA, and Sergeant Amanda Grendeman will be there, speaker at that event. It will be held Tuesday, June 21st, at the Chanhassen Rec Center from 6:30 to 8:30. And as soon as the ink dries, I will also get that over to Ari to get posted on the city as well. So that just got done this morning. So thank you to Sergeant Grendeman and our guest speaker from the DEA for coming to speak to our community about our epidemic we have going on. In addition to that, we have our on-duty shoot for training for the month, and we're also starting to prep for 4th of July coming up very, very soon. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Any questions, Council? I just have two. Could you speak a little bit more about the Community Watch program? Are you going to do that another time?
Yeah, I'll get some more information on that.
Okay.
As soon as I'm done with it.
Okay, okay. I won't put you in the hot seat then.
It's similar to what Ring is doing.
Pardon me?
Similar to what Ring has for their public safety side of things. It's pretty similar to that.
Right. I mean, I'm familiar with it, but I'm just, you know, in terms of the communication, I know Ari is going to put something out. Okay, that would be great, please.
So citizens can register their, if they have a surveillance camera at home, doesn't have to be Ring. There's several other brands as well, can register with the sheriff's office. So if we have crimes occur in the community, it allows us to look on a map, see who has those available, and we can reach out to the public and say, if we had this event occur within this time window, if you happen to have surveillance video from this timeframe, please contact us, and we will match those two up.
Great. Thank you.
That's very brief.
No, but that's great. I mean, it's just to start getting people familiar with it. And I know the messaging will come out through our, you know, from the city, and I will do it through my messaging as well. But it's a great program, and I know residents have been interested. So I'm really happy to see this move forward. So I appreciate it.
Your city manager is as well.
Yes. I know that. And then the last thing, I'm guessing, with, since it's Change the Outcome and it's an educational advocacy group, this is also being shared with schools?
It just got done this morning, so yes, it will be shared in a number of places, yes.
Okay, so I'm just jumping ahead of things right now.
We will be advertising that significantly.
Okay. I just, I mean, it's a great program. I'm glad you know you're a part of it. And while it's really important for parents, I hope that they share this within the school, both school districts as well. Would be great.
We will start advertising that starting tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you, Lieutenant. I appreciate it. And before you leave and the chief leaves, I just want to acknowledge again how I know you continue to expand your reporting with new information and details, and just really appreciate the information that you're providing, Council. So it just gives us a little, you know, more insight into what's happening in the community. So just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. Appreciate it.
For next to me.
Thank you, too. All right. Next, we have our public hearing, and for Lake Lucy Road, Mr. Howley, I'll turn it to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got a PowerPoint here. Let's get this going. We're here tonight to talk about the 2022 Lake Lucy Road rehabilitation project. Here we go. So tonight's action, we are here to hold the assessment hearing, which is a public hearing. We are to consider accepting the bids for the project and consider awarding the construction contract, and then consider adopting the final assessment role. As a reminder, the project area's scope is the rehabilitation via Millan overlay of .7 miles of street. It's Lake Lucy Road between Trunk Highway 41 and Galpin Boulevard. The trail, the existing Batuminis Trail, will also undergo a full-depth reclaim, so we'll grind it all up and repave that. There'll be spot curb and gutter replacement, minor utility repairs, pretty standard stuff that we do on all these rehab projects. Fix a couple deficient storm manholes, replace castings that don't meet our current standards. And we are going to be adding in three storm sewer catch basins to prevent some 10-year event flooding, to keep the road passable. And then we did include a storm pond maintenance project as a bid alternate, which is located with a star on the map there. A little bit about the project background here. We originally ordered it, designed it, and actually bid it back in 2019 and 2020. It went through the complete state statute for 29 public process for assessments. We had two open houses at the time and two public hearings. At that time, we held the assessment hearing. There were no formal assessment appeals received. The city did elect not to move forward with the project due to the impacts of the pandemic at the time. So we rescheduled the project to align with our CIP for this year, 2022. We did go ahead and install two driver speed feedback signs that were part of that project. Last year, we added that in as a change order to a different project because we saw the importance of that as a way to mitigate some traffic speeding concerns that we had. So that's already done. So after the restart, we're currently going through the entire assessment for 29 process. We had two more open houses and one public hearing for ordering the project, and tonight is the second public hearing. We held an open house just last week, and I think there were representatives of five properties at that meeting. The majority of the questions had to do with why are we assessing residents for a collector-type road? And we really don't, shouldn't be assessing for this type of work. And we'll get to those kind of answers in the PowerPoint here. Summary of the bids. We bid the project on April 17th. Four bids came in, competitive bids. Again, the alternate was the pond. The engineer's estimate was below the two lowest bids, so that's always a good thing. On this one, we are, we don't recommend awarding alternate one, the pond work. We did recommend the alternate pond work on the street project, if you remember about a month ago, but on this project, we're electing not to, and we'll just include that and wrap that into our overall pond maintenance project. And Valley Paving, who is the low bid, is a satisfactorily completed street projects for us in the past, and we would, the engineer and staff would recommend going with their low bid. How it all fits in the project budget is our CIP has a total of $875,000 for the whole project, and we added in $88,000 in Carissa funds. And you might say, what the heck are these Carissa funds? And those are the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. So it was money that came from the feds for the pandemic, and it kind of came through MINDOT, and we were allowed to use it in a couple different ways. Had to go through the state aid, so we could use it on state aid work. And we decided to use it for a current state aid project to help with our MSA funding, and that's the $88,000. So when we add up the bid and then the soft costs like engineering, the amounts are on the right-hand column, and we are under budget on three of the four line items except for water, where we're just slightly over. And we'll either fill that just by the enterprise fund balance, or we'll, you know, not do as many bolt replacements as we originally wanted to. But we'll try to get it all done. All that said, we're under budget for my project total. Here is the map showing the assessments. The blue parcels are the individual parcels that we would assess, and the red one is our well site, so we wouldn't necessarily assess ourselves. But we are counted as one of the properties for the math. So a summary on the assessments. So Lake Lucy Road is a collector roadway, which means it is designed and functions to move traffic from, through an area, not just neighborhood roads. And because of this, the road is wider than our traditional residential street. So what we do on these assessments, to be fair, per our assessment policy, is we normalize the road width and take a percentage of that that we use to calculate the assessments. So the property owners aren't charged for the full 36-foot width of the road. They're only charged for a prorated share of 31 feet. And on this project, because it's a collector road, there aren't as many residential driveways and homes on these roads. So it might be unfair to say, well, we have a limited number of homes, but you got to pay for the whole length of the road. So we do an adjustment downward based on front footage of the actual residential lots versus like the front footage of the entire street, and we prorate it down, and that was a 48%. So we do those two adjustments. And also note that we didn't include the trail FDR work and this Texas underseal, which is basically a chip seal underneath the mill, which is a new strategy that we're attempting on this project. And because we're kind of doing that as a test case, we didn't feel it was appropriate to assign that to the assessments. So the trail and the underseal are not in the assessable amount. So as you can see in the chart, the assessments get adjusted way down, and when we have the 20 units, it comes out to 3,816 per unit. To continue on the assessment summary, you'll note that when we did the feasibility study and we assigned a preliminary assessment amount, that was $4,040. Well, based on the bids that we got coming in low, it was a decrease of 5.6% for the final amount. This amount, the 3816, does fall within our historic range for Millan overlay projects, which is $2,000 to $4,000. So this is within that range. I would point out that in 2020, when the project was bid previously, the assessment amount, using kind of the same formula before and now, was actually 3718. So it was about $100 cheaper, but we're two years further with inflation. And again, when that assessment hearing was held, there were no formal objections at that time. Another item to bring up is, well, some new development projects nearby have pushed a lot of construction traffic on this road, so they should have to pay. We can't really do that for adjacent developments, but nonetheless, the rehabilitation work we're doing, which is a Millan overlay, really wasn't affected by that traffic. If that development didn't occur, we still would be doing a Millan overlay, and it still would cost the same amount whether there was that additional traffic or not. So it's really a moot point, even though there were some additional traffic from nearby developments. But again, it is a collector road. It is designed to handle that load and that traffic volume. It didn't make it a Millan overlay project to a full recon project, which one could reasonably argue, well, why are we having to pay for that? So that's not the case. And a reminder that the fundamental equity concept of our assessment policy is that every eligible residential property in the city will at some point get assessed for the road that they have a driveway on when it gets rehabilitated. So whether you're on a collector road or a local residential road, the street in front of your house gets rehabbed, you're going to get, you're going to get assessed per our policy. And we do those adjustments that I went through on the previous slide to make it fair, to make it normalized to a typical street. Another comparison to look at on the collector roads is, if you remember, we just went through Minnewash to Parkway, which really is the only other collector road in the city where we have an abundance of residential driveways. So we went through this on Minnewash to Parkway with the same kind of questions like, yeah, but there's so much traffic on this road. Why am I paying for all of it? You're not paying for all of it. You're paying for a prorated percentage of it. And so the same theory applies with what we did with Minnewash to Parkway, and we actually did that two times, phase one and phase two, and this one follows that same kind of methodology. I would like to point out that on Minnewash to Parkway, for both phase one and phase two, no formal objections were cast on those projects. This chart kind of further breaks down the idea of these adjustments. And maybe the best thing to look at is, for both these projects, the Minnewash to project and then this Lake Lucy Road project, without the adjustments, if we just assessed per the cost of the project at 40%, Minnewash to project would have been $10,000 per unit, and we only charged $4,080. And this project, the assessment would be $9,205, but with the adjustments, we're down in that $3,816, bringing it down in a range of other comparable Millan overlay projects. I'm going to pass the presentation over to our city attorney to talk about the next couple of slides, which is what happens if somebody appeals the assessment? What happens, right? Because that doesn't really happen, but we've had some written objections, so we thought it'd be best to talk through that. Andrea?
So when you do your assessment of the
process, anyone who wants to object to that process needs to file a written objection up until the end of the hearing with the city. Appeals then need to be filed within 30 days with the district court. If they aren't filed within that time period, then they're no longer able to object. The assessment role constitutes the initial proof that the proposed assessment does not exceed the special benefit, and that's the presumption that a court will take if it goes to district court. And then it's up to the property owner to provide evidence that counteracts that determination, which would include, you know, hiring an attorney and obtaining their own appraisal. At that point in time, the district court can either affirm the assessment or have sent it back to the city for reassessment, consistent with the district court's decision. If the district court appeal is not successful, the objector must pay the city its costs, which would not include attorney fees. There has been information provided to the city regarding two St. Paul court cases, which were based on the same facts, the same parties. And those involved, in the initial case, it was the city of St. Paul had assessed basically all of its residents, maintenance fees for things that they do, street lighting, curb and gutter, mill and overlay, painting signs, code enforcement, some of the things that you might typically handle, like weed, weed control, that sort of thing. And they called it a charge, a charge for service. It was appealed to district court and then went on to the Minnesota Court of Appeals. The Minnesota Court of Appeals held that it was not a fee under the city's police powers, but it was a tax. And the court sent it back to the district court to determine whether or not the assess, there was a benefit to the property. Under the theory that St. Paul, the city of St. Paul was using, they wouldn't have had to show that special benefit. But when it is a tax, you do have to show the special benefit. What happened was the city of St. Paul then got rid of basically 20 of those types of charges and came back with the same theory for three of those charges, one of which was a mill and overlay. And they tried to, again, shove it under that 429.101 statute, which would not require a showing of special benefit. Again, the court said, no, 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 you don't get another bite of the apple. This is the same argument you tried to make before, and it is still a tax. The court did not say that the city could not tax it as a special assessment, but they could not charge it as a fee. In addition, it wasn't uniform because they charged similar types of properties within the city, one fee, which was different than the charge that they assessed to similar properties that were in this downtown district. So it was not uniform. And they would take, they didn't make any sort of determination that this cost applied to your property, whatever this charge was that they were charging for. It was just, these are all of our costs that we incur throughout the city, and then we come up with a fee for everybody, and that's what we charge. This instance is completely different. This is specifically allowed under Minnesota statute 429 as a local improvement that benefits specific property. And the city has established through its feasibility report that it has determined that there's a special benefit to those specific properties. So the St. Paul cases just aren't applicable here.
The project schedule. Tonight, we are doing the assessment hearing and considering a war of the contract. Should it move forward, we're ready to start construction in June, July. Substantial completion in the contract is September, and then final completion would be next year, but that was because that pond alternate was in there. So, and we have restoration work. So we haven't had the sit-down meeting with the contractor to go through their detailed schedule. That happens next. We have to make sure we have a project first before we schedule those meetings. But I know the contractor's here tonight. If he had any specific questions, might be able to divulge. But nonetheless, that's the schedule moving forward. And in summary, from an engineering and financing perspective, the project is feasible, it's necessary, and cost-effective. So after conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the council adopt two resolutions. One is to accept the bids and award the construction contract to Valley Paving, and the other is to adopt the final assessment. I have the motion up there when you're ready, but we'll stand for questions, and then we can hold the public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Howley. Counsel, do you have any questions before I open the public hearing? I have one for city attorney, just a point of clarification for me. So before I close the public hearing, if somebody wants to object to the assessment, they have to fill out something before I close it, correct?
That's correct.
And so they would just have to state that they are going to object and then fill out paper?
Provided, provided to you.
Okay, okay. So that's one point of clarification. And then the other one, Mr. Howley, I believe it was in a previous presentation, in terms of the timeline, I know you said that it'll be completed in June of '23. Is most of the work completed this summer and fall?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, yes, absolutely. Substantial completion is when the thing is pretty much done, and that's by September of this year.
Okay.
Ahead of school.
Read the screen? You should have just said that.
We want to get done ahead of school.
Okay, that was, you were reading my mind. That was my big question. So with all the school buses there, so I just wanted to make sure. And then one of the questions that I know came up in the, in a couple of emails that we received, had to do with crosswalks. Could you just address crosswalks, please?
Yes. I will go to the map. Here, currently, there's a marked crosswalk at Manchester crossing Lake Lucy. So it's got the pavement markings, and it's got some signs, and it even has some flags, I think, on the signs itself. Down here on Brendan and Lake Harrison, there's not such a thing. This project is including a couple of things. One, we're installing a pedestrian curb ramp on the north side of the road across from Lake Harrison, which is going to be where the marked crosswalk is, then to get to the south side of Lake Lucy. So we'll have new pad ramps, we'll have pavement markings and signage, advanced warning signage for that marked crosswalk. So we knew that needed to be done with the project, and that was certainly part of it.
And does that, I believe that the driveway right across the street is, maybe lines up with the street? Where, where will the, if you're headed, if you're crossing from, you know, Brendan Court across Lake Lucy, where is the, is there a little sidewalk there to land in front of the well station?
There's a trail that goes here.
Yep.
The crossing will be on the east side of the Lake Harrison, so it wouldn't interfere with any driveways.
Okay.
And then there is a, we'll do a new pedestrian refuge on the corner, and then there'll be more crosswalk getting you across Lake Harrison to continue down this way. So there is a spot there. It's not just curb.
Right, okay. I just, I know there isn't one there now, so I was just curious how that was going to lay out. So I appreciate that clarification. All right, so next I'll open the public hearing, and if anyone wants to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, and then just address the counsel, please. And then if you plan on objecting to the assessment, if you would just make sure that is clearly stated, so we can understand that objection, and then we can move before I close the public hearing. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. My name is Sharon Pudwell. We live at 2237 Lake Lucy Road, and we are objecting to the assessments. We did not live here in 2020 when the feasibility study and things were happening, so all of this is relatively new to us. I would like to present the objections, an original with signatures, wet signatures of all the neighbors in our development, or in all of the 20, I guess I should say 19, since the city's not assessing itself, that have objected to, sorry, I don't want to be straightened this up. That have objected to the assessments for various reasons that are stated in the letter. Can I flip it over?
Sure.
Okay, I can give you the original. And I'm curious, based on the discussion that the city attorney just had, whether there's a separate form that we need to fill out, or is this written objection sufficient for everybody that signed?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, super. All right, so I'll give you this whenever you need it. And then separate, as I dug into this a little bit more, my husband and I have just signed this one separately. It just kind of goes into a little bit more of the distinction between taxes and fees, and speaks to the question of, what I think is a question about the franchise fee in general. So I will leave this with you as well. I'd like it to be considered as part of our objection. Is that okay? That's a yes from the city attorney. So I had, and I had transmitted this same letter, Mayor, to you by email. So it's just, it's the same letter that's just signed. I want to give a few extra comments to supplement the letter, but also to respond to Mr. Howley's comments, and maybe also to the city attorneys. But I didn't really come expecting to make a legal argument. I just came here as a citizen to voice general concerns about the project. I would like an opportunity to like supplementally argue the issues, but maybe that just happens later if we challenge the case. So I do feel like this being a municipal state aid road, that it is different than the city's assessment policy in other respects. And the city's assessment policy is not as clear-cut as I heard Mr. Howley speak about it. Rather, it allows the counsel and the mayor a lot of flexibility in how you impose those assessments, including the ability to ask the roads department to revisit how they've calculated it. And there are a couple of things when I look at it that are wrong-headed. One is, I don't see anything in the policy that says we have a policy of only assessing a property once, and it's based on the driveway. That's not there, at least the policy from January 22 and January 2020 that I reviewed. What we have is 20 people who live on a road, and I don't have any problem with the project as designed. I think it's a beautiful project. I just object to doing any work that's not fully funded by the city when what's being asked of the citizens really is a tax. And the city attorney and I can disagree on this, but my read of the cases, including the Minnesota Supreme Court's cases, is that when there is a general improvement that benefits everybody in the city, and there's no unique special benefit to the properties being assessed, it's a tax. And that doesn't mean that the city can't impose that tax. There's just a higher standard when you do that. You have to establish that there's a special benefit to me that's different from everybody else, and the proof that is available is most commonly accepted by the courts, is an appraisal to establish that the value of my property has increased by the amount of the assessment. So with all due respect, I have not seen the feasibility study. I don't know if it's sufficient from an evidentiary purposes to be an appraisal, but I would still say that it's not, it's not sufficient. I don't feel that I will be getting $4,000 worth of benefit from the road project. My preference would be that the city look to an advance from the MSA fund or to dip into the franchise fee, particularly if the city is funding its 60% air quotes of the project from the MSA funds. Because conceptually, that suggests to me as a taxpayer that it's the state highway MSA fund and me that are paying for the road. I'm not seeing where it's coming out of the city's general revenue or the franchise fee, that I understand as a newcomer to Chanhassen, has been collected to pay for road maintenance, including mill and overlay. So I would like to see the $76,000 proposed assessment be rejected. I do think it's unfair to have 19 families pay for this based on what the DOT says is 2,300 vehicles a day, on average, travel this road. That's got to mean way beyond everybody in the city of Chanhassen. I know when we lived in Chesapeake, we regularly cut across on Lake Lucy to avoid Highway 7 traffic. So to ask 20 families, 19, sorry, I keep forgetting the city's got one of the lots, to pay $4,000 for a road construction project that I personally don't feel is necessary? I don't know if you guys have driven the roads. I think they look just fine. Let's patch them for another couple of years. But $4,000 is a lot of money, especially in these like post-COVID economic struggle times, for us to pay for a road that 2,300 people a day at least drive across. And that's a 2019 DOT number. It's going to get more when the Lennar development is all up and running. And right now, it, there is a lot of construction traffic there now. I accept your point, Mr. Howley, that that hasn't been what's caused, you know, the wear and tear on the road, but that doesn't mean it isn't continuing to cause wear and tear on the road and going to increase the traffic that's going to be on that road. My second point with the city's assessment policy is that there is a lot of flexibility. The city's assessment policy recognizes that there are various ways to calculate assessments, and that the policy doesn't apply in all circumstances. The policy doesn't bind the city to any particular outcome. It gives you a lot of flexibility. And my suggestion to you, with all due respect, is that for an MSA road, that is exactly the kind of situation where you would depart from the policy and not impose the assessments on 19 property owners. Recognition that it's already a burden enough to have 2,300 people drive in front of your house every day. We shouldn't have to pay $4,000 for that privilege. I would argue, and I said this to Mr. Bender at the public meeting, that I would hazard a guess that the nicer the road is, the higher the speed is going to get on that road. So we're just not looking forward to that at all, to be honest with you, Mayor. I, when I look at the assessment map, I see that there are at least five dead-end roads that dump into Lake Lucy. So as you look at it, as it travels from east to west, there are five roads that dump into that road. And if we're all benefiting from that road, then all those people should be included in the assessment role and pay a share of it. There's no unique benefit to me to have Lake Lucy paid than my neighbor and my friend down on Manchester Drive, because they pull out on Lake Lucy and frankly, drive further on it than I do each day. They cannot get out of those dead-end roads without driving on the very rehab project that's being proposed. And there's like 150 houses that aren't being, that are getting a benefit, if you claim that's a benefit, without being assessed. I think that is really problematic from the city's perspective of defending this as a uniform assessment tax that benefits me somehow uniquely, because it doesn't. It benefits all those people on the dead-end roads substantially similarly. They use it the same way I do. I would ask that the city find $76,000 in its tax base or the franchise fee to pay for the balance of this project. I presumed that the city would actually be using one of those funds for its $3,816 share of the assessment, but it sounds like the city doesn't pay at all. Is that correct, Mr. Howley?
Madam Counsel, the money has to be accounted for and paid because it's a project cost. It just comes out of the fund where we're paying for everything else.
And what fund is that? And what fund is that?
We have a, what's called a Payment Management Program Fund. We call it PMP for short, and that's how we pay for all of our road projects.
And that's tax dollars paid by us as well?
There is multiple funding sources of that. There is a general levy through tax. There is franchise fee, and it is MSA.
So, the franchise fees are not, yes, Mayor?
Ms. Pudwell, I'm going to sorry to interrupt you. If you could just finish your comments, and then we, then it comes back to council, and then we follow up with those questions for our staff.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. So, I'm, I'm curious that if the city can pay its share of the $3,800 assessment from a pot of money that is funded either by tax levies, franchise fees, or MSA funds, why they're not able to pay the entire 76,000? And I genuinely mean no disrespect to anybody in the room. If you want to raise my taxes, and raise the taxes of everybody in the city of Chanhasan for the $1.8 million that you get in franchise fees, I would be the first person there defending your right to do that. But, doing this as an assessment is, is wrong, and I really think it jeopardizes your ability to continue moving forward with the franchise fee program as well. I think that really summarizes our position, and I, I speak for myself generally in my public comments, but the letter also speaks for all the residents equally. We just think it's really not, not fair. Thank you for your time. Do you want me to stay, in case there are any follow-ups?
Uh, you may stay.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay. And we'll, I mean, you can sit down.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I didn't think you were kicking me out.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Please, come forward. Just your name and address, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Stephen Kirkfield, reside at 2201 Lake Lucy Road. I'll be very brief, with just a couple of comments, or questions. I apologize if I didn't do something correctly two years ago. Apparently, it was discussed that there was no formal complaints. I did have an email that was sent to the city with my disagreement, but apparently that didn't count to me to do something else. But, there was concern two years ago about this project, pretty much outlining the same thing that you just heard. I do have a question that can be certainly answered later. It sounded like this project falls within the 2,000, $2,000 to $4,000 cost, but I didn't hear the frequency. How often does a home, say, on Manchester, have to have their road done at $2,000 to $4,000? At increased traffic, I would anticipate that ours is being done at a greater frequency. And I do ask the city, I, I'm certainly uneducated on it, but I have heard rumor that there is going to be a roundabout, perhaps at the end of Lake Lucy at Galpin. If that is true, that means that there is recognition of increased traffic, and wear and tear, and that something has to be done differently, so I would ask you to consider that while considering this assessment.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Pudwell, 2237 Lake Lucy Road. I just have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I would like to know the authority that you are deriving, Mr. Howley, as far as on the road is, where do you get your assessment authority from? When you look at Chapter 429 specifically, which one of those says, on this MSA road, that you are allowed to do that versus a citywide tax because of this, the type of road that it is, you know, access from a lot more people than just the Lake Lucy, Lake Lucy residents? And with over 2,300 vehicles traveling that, I have a hard time understanding your justification, because your engineers, when we went to the public hearing the other night, was, it's increasing our property value. And so, we would like to see the formula that you guys used, that you're professing, and what that property value increase is, because as I look back on our homes, this is our fourth purchase while we've been in Minnesota over the last 30 years, and we, just for example, we bought a house in Prior Lake. The road was completely destroyed, but in four years, the price of the house doubled. Nobody, it had nothing to do with the road. So, I'm not sure where you're getting your, your, your information, or formula from. It'd be great for us to see that. So, the question I have is, where is your authority coming from, from Chapter 429 in the state statute? And the formula for your, our increased property values? And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward this evening?
Good evening. Mayor and Council, I don't know how I can top that, but Jason Dreher, 2144 Lake Lucy Road. I've been in this residence, I live there for, going on 18 years, and I really haven't seen the road change. I don't really see a need for the project, first of all. I was on Google Map today, looking at properties, and it's funny that you could see on the Google, the Google truck going by, and you, I look at the road, it looks exactly the same. You can move up and down the road, there might be a couple potholes here and there, but the crack in front of my house, that was there 15 years ago, or 12 years ago. I believe it was like, 12 years ago, when the Google guy came through, it was dated. I, I am really concerned about increased speed on the road by a, any, any kind of any kind of improvement that doesn't enhance traffic calming. I don't see any of that in this project. And, you know, you talk about the Galpin Road being redone, that is certainly going to increase traffic a lot. And the wear and tear, the heavy trucks, everything about it, it's, and then back to Mr. Pudwell, Pudwell's statement of, you know, the value, I don't see an added value to my property. An assessment, to me, is when I add on, I do a project, I don't get assessed even when I, I re-roof my house, I don't get reassessed. It's an improvement to my house. I don't get reassessed for that. But, the city is going to impose a road project on me, which I feel the road doesn't even need it, without a, without calming, without speed reduction, without any enhancement to my property value. It's, it's, it's unbelievable in my eyes, and a lot of the neighbors are, feel the exact same way. And we've talked, we've talked to all the neighbors. I'm a little disappointed that more people didn't show up. It's a little bit of apathy. I guess that's all I really have to say. I'm, I'm pretty disappointed, really, in the whole project, considering you could have made it better, and then I would say, you know what? I'm all for it. I'll pay more money for a better road, but I'm not going to pay more money for a road that's just going to increase the speed without any benefit to my property.
Thank you.
Can I make one addition?
Sure, you may come back up.
Okay. One other item that I would like Mr. Howley to address, is we, today we looked at all the road projects that you guys have accomplished over the last five, seven years. And as was addressed, or alluded to earlier, the dead ends off of Lake Lucy, and on many of your projects, you guys included the dead ends, as part of the rehabilitation. And, so the question is, what's different about Lake Lucy, when you have, as was mentioned earlier, 150, approximately 150 residences, that have to use Lake Lucy as an entrance and an exit? And they have no liability at all in this process that you've come up with? And how, you know, some rationale why your dead ends and other projects were completed, and Lake Lucy is not? Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is Sharon Pudwell. I just have one follow-up, which is on the issue of the value that Jason was speaking about. Some of my clients do appraisal work for federal land acquisitions, and I know the federal appraisal standards do not add any value for an improved road. And I could cite you to the Yellow Book, but probably not the page. The federal standard for, uniform standard for appraisals, there's no value added. When we acquire, as the federal government, when we acquire a property, even when we acquire the road, we don't pay extra for the road. The only time we make an adjustment to the value of the property is if the road needs to be completely reconstructed, then it's a reduction in the value. So, again, I just, I really dispute that the city would be able to prove, as it needs to, that I'm getting almost $4,000 worth of special benefit for the road project. Thank you.
Might it be real brief again? I asked the council, I think it was Minnewash to Parkway, that you'd referred to as a comparison. It doesn't mean Minnewash to Parkway project was done properly. It was done. I asked the council to consider not just following what was done last time, if there is only one case, but to look, is that really the right case to have followed, or to move forward with? Thank you.
Thank you. Don't think so. So, back to our city attorney, we have the formal complaint letter with the signatures. And so, by having that formal complaint, they have the ability, what would be, before I close this, do I need to do anything?
No.
Okay.
You just need to accept the objection.
One second, please. Could you say that again?
You just need to accept the objection as part of the council meeting.
Mr. Howley, you can grab them. All right. And then, they're responsible for the follow-up, the formal follow-up?
If they want to go further with their objection, they would then need to file a suit in district court.
Okay.
An assessment appeal.
An assessment appeal, okay. With no further people coming forward, I will hereby close the public hearing, and return it back to city council. And I know there are a lot of questions that came up, so I know you are writing some down. I don't know if you want me to ask them, or you want to go through them, and then, if you don't address the ones that I have written down, I'll follow up with a question, however you want to handle that, Mr. Howley.
Mayor, Council, why don't I try to burn through the ones?
That I have answers for, or defer to Andrea, and if I miss one, maybe you can follow back though.
Okay, perfect.
Why aren't all dead-end roads done, because they have been done on other road projects that we've done over time?
I think the answer for this one is because Lake Lucy Road is an MSA road, and these other cul-de-sacs are not. So, we, we built out and scoped a project just to do the MSA road, because that's typical. These other roads don't have MSA funding, they're not MSA eligible, you prepare the plan sets differently, you, you're mixing stuff. So, it's just out of kind of ease, that you would just do an MSA road project by itself.
If this was a non-MSA road, we probably would have had some of these cul-de-sacs attached to it. Another reason might be, and I don't know off the top of my head, but we tend to go after roads in areas that need the work to be done, right? Just, just because we're there, we're not going to rip up a road if it doesn't need it. So, I don't know what the OCI is, the condition index, of these other cul-de-sacs. So, even if it wasn't an MSA road, but we were doing it anyways, some of the cul-de-sacs might be part of it, and some wouldn't. So, a couple different answers for that. And these other neighborhood projects, all were non-MSA roads. As an answer.
And then, just as a follow-up on that, similar to other road projects, so if it's a separate road and a separate cul-de-sac, then they are assessed differently than the other, like, I'm thinking Long Acres, when you did that project. There were some cul-de-sacs in there that were, it was their own assessment there?
Those ones are in the case of private drives, and private roads. So, a property, the policy, the spirit of the policy is, well, if you've got more than a handful, a number of properties that have a private road, they have to own and maintain that private road outside of the city. So, they're already paying the money to do that, so we don't assess them, to get on their private road, and then get on our public street. So, they're excluded from, from that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What authority, within 429, are we allowed? I have to defer to Andrea to that. I just noticed 429. Maybe she doesn't even know off the top of her head, but that's our authority.
Statute 429, point 021.
Point 021.
And what is that authority? I mean, what does that say?
Council of Municipalities shall have the power to make the following improvements: to acquire, open, and widen any street, and to improve the same by constructing, reconstructing, and maintaining sidewalks, pavements, gutters, curbs, and vehicle parking strips of any material, or by grading, graveling, oiling, or otherwise improving the same, including the beautification thereof, including storm sewers, or other street drainage and connections from sewer water or similar mains to curb lines. And that is recognized by courts as the authority for assessing for local improvements, to the extent that there's a special benefit to the properties that, about it.
Thank you.
We had a question about the council has flexibility in the policy. Well, that's, that's true. You have the flexibility to do whatever you want on the assessments, but the policy is there to guide the decision. Just patch and do it later, I would argue. It's just going to cost more later, so an assessment would be higher, not only with the cost of doing business and inflation, but the repair might not be a mill and overlay at that point. It might be an FDR or a recon, so you're going to pay more. That's not a good strategy, in my opinion. The frequency of a $2,000 to $4,000 assessment compared to other local streets, road sections are designed based on traffic. So, in theory, a collector road that has 3,000 cars a day, that the road section is built stiffer, it's built thicker, it's built bigger than our normal road section. So, it handles the more traffic. So, in theory, the recurrence of an assessment, whether you're on a local road or a collector road, should be the same. The roundabout on Galpin, and increasing traffic, we're under Galpin design right now. We did a preliminary design a couple of years ago, and there were some roundabouts as options. So, we're just now dipping our toes in the water with the next round of public engagement to go through kind of what those geometrics look like, and what the options are. With development in a city, will traffic volumes go up on streets? Yes. This road, if it's got 2,400 cars now, could there be 3,500 cars five years from now? Yeah. But, it's a collector road. It's designed for 3,000 to 6,000 cars per day. So, increased traffic is to be accepted in any growing community, primarily on collector The road's 20 years old, it hasn't really changed, there's no need. I would say the, the road's got an OCI, it's been evaluated, and it needs a rehabilitation. Some people subjectively could say, ah, it's not that bad, right? But, it has the OCI where our standards are to rehabilitate the road. I would say, the only maintenance on this road that has occurred, since they were originally built, and it was built in stages, a couple of years apart, is just some pothole patchings and some seal coating. It's held up pretty good. It's held up pretty good for this. This project probably was 10 years overdue, but it's held up pretty good. But it is in need of rehabilitation. Decisions can always be made to punt and do it later, of course. But the road is in need of rehabilitation based on our performance metrics of our condition index.
Mr. Howley, do you want to just explain that a little bit? Like the OCI and how you evaluate across the city and that we have a five-year plan for the OCI? And this is, you go back and evaluate every, you know? If you could just walk through that, I think that's important to share as well.
Sure thing, Mayor Council. So our pavement management plan is all based on reviewing and rating the pavements. We call them OCIs, overall condition index, or sometimes PCI, pavement condition index. They mean the same thing. When you're dealing with pavement, you usually use PCI, but we're living in, all assets have OCIs, whether it's pavement or a building. Citywide, we have broken ours up into three quadrants, Zone 1, Zone 2 and Zone 3. And so every third year, we have a consultant go out and physically put their eyes and measure and do a performance evaluation of the pavement. And that gets inputted into our asset management software, Cartograph, and it now has a new OCI. OCIs or PCIs are 0 to 100. 100 is a brand-new road. 0 is dirt road, gravel road, what have you. Depending what OCI you're at, you do different types of rehabilitation, right? Less than 40s, you're probably in the full recon, maybe some FDRs. If you're up in the 90s, you would just do a seal coat or something. If you're in the, you know, 50s, 60s, 70s, it might be mill and overlay. So whenever we do the feasibility report of any road project, we go through and we look at when it was last rated. Sometimes we update the ratings. So, and we do geotechnical evaluations and we have the consultants review the road and we come up with the best rehabilitation. Our goal for our overall street network in the city is to have an average OCI of 70, which means we'll have some above that and we'll have some below that. And we're always, just every year, we're doing projects to keep that average at 70. And that's how we create our five-year capital improvement plans. That's how we budget out five years. We have a plan for attacking these roadways. And our plan has been bolstered by the franchise fee from three years ago, which is great. Did that kind of cover it?
It does, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you. No traffic calming. So as I mentioned, the driver feedback signs are truly the strategy number one on this road and those are already in. We have not done any on this section of road follow-up to see, you know, how it's working, right? We're due to do that. It's on our list to do that. Those signs do collect traffic data and we will extract the data from those signs to see how it's working, right? But that was our traffic calming strategy. Along with the new cross, pad crossing and the signage, that was to help with the non-motorized vehicles crossing safely. And then you'll remember that we're going to do a parking lane on one side of the street and the center line of the road is going to, the yellow stripes will be moved over a couple of feet. But that visual white line is going to create that, similar to Kerber, is going to create that restriction that the goal is, as a mitigation strategy, is to reduce speeds, slow traffic down. So that's another mitigation strategy. There are no other, you know, bump outs or other more higher level of traffic calmings that just through our discussions, design, open houses, it just didn't rise to the level of need. But we've done a few things on that. It's a tax, nothing unique. Again, I, special benefit is in the rules of 429. I, I guess, can't sit here and say that it has direct correlation to a property value, like, well, next year, my property value will be $4,000 higher. I don't know that that's what special benefit means or the test. I guess I would defer to Andrea to maybe speak a little bit more about that. Our formula for calculating the assessments is based on the costs and the assessment policy and how to break them down equitably around the city. So I think I got through all the ones I had written down.
Okay. I have a couple more.
Okay.
And then if council had any more that they picked up along the way, please feel free to ask Mr. Howley. So one of the questions was assessed, being assessed only once.
Mayor Council, yeah. So if you live there long enough, you might get assessed again, right? If a road lasts 50 years and you live there 80 years, you're going to go through two road rehabilitation projects. You'll get assessed twice, in theory, assuming the assessment policy is still around whenever the project happens. The point made about what's written in the policy about if you have driveway access off of that road, it's written in there, but I guess it could be clearer. I don't have it in front of me to see how it's written. But the intent of when we went through the update this January was to try to make that clear. And I guess maybe we didn't do a good enough job. But that's the intent, is the road you take access off of, not the road where your side yard is or your backyard is, but the road where your driveway is, is that road, when that gets rehabbed, is when you will get assessed. And if you live there long enough, it might be once, it might be twice. Might be never if you live there and move out.
Right. All right. And then another question that was brought up, wasn't really a formal question, but it was a suggestion to borrow against MSA. And I think this is very important to talk about the history of the MSA funds and how the MSA dollars are collected from the state and the concern there. So if you would, wouldn't mind sharing a few details about the MSA.
You bet, Mayor Council. So the program of municipal state aid, the pot of money where it comes from is from gas tax, vehicle registrations and those sorts of things at the state level that they collect money, fees, taxes, whatever, they collect money. They put it into a big pot and then they segregate it out to, you know, MINDOT. The counties have a county state aid. We have municipal state aid. So the big pot gets split and it gets split again. And we, as a city, have needs based on so much mileage in our city. How much of that mileage is MSA and then how much of the big pot we get? And we get that amount kind of every year for our maintenance and rehabilitations of our MSA-eligible streets. That's why when we do a road project and design it for an MSA street, there's special plans. You have to get, you have to submit them to state aid. Has to meet certain standards. They have to review it. Because at some point, you're going to submit an invoice to them to say, here, we'd like to collect or get reimbursed X amount of money out of our state aid account. That account fluctuates based on how many projects we do. If we do four MSA roads one year, there's more money that we would have expended than is in our account and you would have had to advance, right? You're borrowing from your future allocations, allotments to spend today. Generally, not a good practice, right? That's just not good financial management, which is one of the pillars of our strategic priorities. They have a program to advance and some cities do use it. But that might be for, you have like a really big project and you want to get it done and you need to advance a little bit. It wouldn't be just to do more projects because you're never going to catch up, right? So we develop a plan based on how much money we're going to have coming in, what our MSA needs are, and then we look out five, 10 years to say, we're going to do this road next year, this road in three years, and spend that money judiciously. So this project is, we, Minnewash to Parkway was an MSA project. That was our, kind of our whole budget. We got a little bit more money this year. That's going to go to this project. We'll get a little bit of money next year. We'll do another MSA project. So we generally don't like to advance our MSA money. And the MSA allotments, they can change. It's what happened in COVID, which is what kind of stopped this project, is the state wasn't collecting the revenue from the new vehicles and the auto parts and primarily the gas tax. So they said, well, you're only getting, you know, X amount of money. You're getting cut. And oh, by the way, you can't advance, right? So they put these restrictions on. So it's really not a stable, as much as you'd like to think it is, it's not really a stable source of revenue, right? Especially if you're going to get into the advanced world, which I don't, I don't like to manage a program that would rely on advancements.
Thank you. And I'll also add to that, that wasn't always the policy or the practice in Shenarrin. And we did years ago borrow against it and it put us in a challenging situation when projects came due. And so looking at that and the predicament it put us in, we changed the policy to not borrow against. And it was reinforced when COVID came along and they changed, you know, the allotment changed and we realized that it puts everybody in a bad situation. So we changed that policy and practice. So I wanted to talk about that. And then the last one, Mr. Howley, if it came up about the 60% and 40%, where is that money coming from?
Mayor Council, so yes, the, our road projects, again, are funded by the PMP fund. The revenue for that fund comes from franchise fee, a tax levy and our MSA dollars. And our policy for the assessments is to, the city will cover 60%, which is paid for by the PMP fund of those various revenue sources. And then the 40% is assessed and it's paid to the benefiting properties. So the fund that pays for our 60% is the PMP fund from various revenue sources. And on this project, it's an MSA project. So, I mean, once the money's in that fund, it's kind of all in there. And then the accounting has to, you know, has to kind of work, but it's all one big pot of money.
Perfect. And I'll add on to that as well. There's not a council member that is under any disillusionment that the PMP fund is not taxpayer dollars. So we recognize that, that it's taxpayer dollars. So it's your money going into this fund. And then the 40% is directly of the, for the driveways of the road. Only three of the five of us on council were part of, that are on the current council, were part of the conversation three to four years ago about the franchise fee. And I know the suggestion was, you know, I will stand here and support, you know, a tax levy increase to fully fund all of the roads. And we had two years of discussion around this. And there were a lot of proponents from our residents that wanted it to be just added to the levy. That's the way it should be. The city should cover 100%. And that's, you know, we recommend that the council, the city council moves forward with it that way. Conversely, we had a higher number of people that had been assessed for years. We're still paying off those assessments and said how unfair it would be if we went away from the assessment practice because the people that had either paid and paid in full, now are going to be paying twice essentially. And the people that were continuing to pay off. And so then the conversation began, well, then go back five years, go back 10 years, go back 15 years, and where do you cut that off? And what's, you know, what's the fair approach? And so while it was a challenging conversation, and like I said, it went over the course of two years. And then we did make the final decision to keep the assessment practice and implement the franchise fee. So it was a very engaged public throughout all of those hearings and had a lot of people here speaking on both sides of that issue. So it is something that was considered at great length. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then lastly, in terms, I think, I don't know if it was brought up tonight or it was part of an email as well about the COVID concerns. Obviously, we recognized two years ago, the world had really flipped upside down and there were so many uncertainties of what was happening with COVID and people's, you know, situations and really where we were at and their resources. And so as a council, we decided that we weren't going to do any road projects in 2020. Obviously, there is always economic challenges. People face challenging situations. But we can't keep continuing to defer road projects because of the unknowns of the economic stability of our city, county, state and nation. But, and so that's why we move, we, you know, have moved forward back in 2021. And then again, this year, we've already started to move forward with our 2022 street projects. So I know it can be challenging. We hear it all the time that this isn't the right time or the road's still in great shape. But that's why we have not only our professionals in our engineering department, but we have, you know, consultants that go out and do the evaluations of the road to check, you know, check the status of the road and make the recommendations to city council. So those are the questions that I heard from the residents and I appreciate you coming forward. Council, were there any other questions that you had or you didn't think got addressed or comments? Councilwoman McDonald.
I have a question. Ms. Pudwell came up and she gave out the petition with the other 19 names on it. But you also said something about you had something separate concerning the franchise fee. I need to know a little bit more what that is and how does that impact upon what we're looking at doing tonight?
Mayor and Council, the statement related to franchise fees would be statement number two. If city taxes or franchise fees are not otherwise available to offset the proposed $76,000 assessment and the city does not want to bond for it, I recommend tabling the project until tax revenue can fully cover the cost of the rehab. This is what our family has to do in our own budget. Asking 19 families to pay nearly $4,000 at this point in time is a financial burden that outweighs any perceived benefit from the road rehab project. Let me just... Yes, and that was item number three. Also stated in item number one was that the city can offset the proposed assessment, seek in advance of MSA funds or use revenue raised through the franchise fee program.
Okay. Thank you. It was mentioned and a lot of talk about it. And I just wanted to see how that all got tied together. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Okay. Question? Councilwoman Campion.
Question, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Howley, so I can't think of any example of road projects in the last, in the last eight years that I've seen where we've not charged properties with, you know, with driveways on the road. Are there any examples that you're aware of where we've had an MSA road and not assessed the properties with driveway frontage?
To my knowledge, no. For example, we had a project a couple of years ago on Lake Drive East down there by the McDonald's. That road is an MSA road, but all of the properties are commercial properties. There was assessments and those ones were assessed by an area, not by a per unit. So the calculation is completely different.
Right.
One of the assessments was $58,000. But there was a range all through there for all of those properties. So, yeah, and MSA roads, the other one was Minnewash to Parkway. And then Kerber, we did a mill and overlay. There were assessments on that, although not many. There were because there's not that many driveways on Kerber. So to my knowledge, and I've been here going on three years, I don't know of any.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I welcome comments. Mr. Councilwoman McDonald.
Comment. Comment. Well, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward. You've really brought forward some interesting legal questions. However, right now, the way the law and the ordinances are put together, my hands are tied. As has been alluded to, we've been doing these things for years. Your overall general comments about not needing the street repaired or not new, it is a subjective decision that is made. We have policies and processes in place to make that, as Mr. Howley came up and said. And we debated this quite a bit two years ago also as to how do we determine whether a road is ready for rehab or not? And that was when we settled upon, I thought it was the pavement index. You brought up a new term, but you said they're both the same. And we settled upon that after much debate and looking at all of this. So for right now, again, as I said, you raised some interesting legal points, but it is not our job to interpret the law. It is our job to implement the law. And right now, what I feel is that it's very clear that I need to support this project because I've seen nothing that would say there are any exceptions that need to be made or not. I would also point out that whenever you start talking about let's go after these cul-de-sacs, are you asking me to assess them twice? Because what happens when I go into their street and I fix their street? I'm going to look for an assessment from them. That could be next year, that could be two years from now, could be five years from now. But is that what you're really truly asking me to do is to go after your neighbors twice? Because someone has to pay for these streets. As the mayor brought up, I was one of the advocates. I wanted to do away with assessments because I do feel they're somewhat unfair. I also feel that there are other communities that do things where the city pays for all of this. We floated that balloon and it got shot down so quick. As the mayor said, I want my money back. Well, how far back do I go? Five years, 10 years, 15 years? That, that's an impossible solution to all of this. To begin with, city couldn't refund that money. That money's been spent. So that was not a viable solution. And it's not a viable solution now, you know, unless someone can come up with another way to give the city a magic pot of money that we can then refund the people so that everyone feels that our assessment policy is now fair to those in the past. This is the fairest system going forward. So that's why I say I feel my hands are tied. You raise an interesting legal position. Good luck with all of that. And I will gladly follow whatever, you know, authority decides to interpret it. But for right now, all I have is what's in front of me. And at that point, it says, I vote for the assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. Any other comments? The, the public hearing is closed. I'm sorry, sir. And I, and I also would just before I ask for a motion, I would like to acknowledge, I know two of the residents that came forward tonight that said that they did bring forward formal objections in, in two years ago. And I will acknowledge that they weren't formal objections where, you know, you were formally objecting and filed, you know, at the public hearing filed a claim against the city. But we did receive your emails and we're familiar with the objections that came with, with doing this project. So I don't want you to misunderstand what Mr. Howley was saying when he said there was no formal objection. So we did get your emails. City council reads your emails and takes, you know, takes the feedback into consideration. Mr. and Mrs. Podwell, I, I also would like to acknowledge, while however the council votes tonight, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate, you know, the, you know, you coming forward with, in the manner that you did and laying out your argument. Like Councilman McDonald said, I think you brought forward some interesting points. I think it is encouraging Mr. Howley to go back and reread how, or all of us for that matter, not just Mr. Howley, I apologize for saying that, but rereading how the assessment policy is written just to make sure that it's clear and more refined and, and, and understanding around that. So I, you know, I appreciate the points that you were bringing forward. But again, I, I am in agreement with Councilman McDonald in terms of kind of the history behind us. We're not here to analyze in the, the legal framework behind this, but what our policy and practices are today. And, and we think this is an important project for the city. And, and I think we do need to make sure that we're making a concerted effort on speeds because I know that continues to be a, a big concern. So I would like to make sure that we get that speed report as well. But I will be supporting this, this project. Are there any other comments, questions or motion?
So I'm, I'm, you know, just brief comment. I'm in agreement with Councilman McDonald as well. I think he put it better than I could. You know, along with Madam Mayor was, you know, on the council a couple of years ago when we were debating this and trying to find a better way to accomplish paying for these street projects. You know, the, the option for having the levy cover it and, you know, doing away with the assessment practice sounded very attractive. But, you know, we, we met the objections that they, they cited. And we just couldn't find a better way to do it going forward. You know, for that reason, I, you know, also, you know, support this, this, this project as, as it's been laid out. And I'll make a motion unless there are any other comments first.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
All right, seeing none. So I move that the city council adopts a resolution accepting the bids and awarding the contract and adopts a resolution adopting the assessment role for the 2022 Lake Lucy Road rehabilitation, rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Councilman Campion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman McDonald. We have a valid motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Howley. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Next up? What? Oh, all right, next up, I think we're pulling something up. I'm not sure. Is the adoption of the Chanhassen Public Tree Policy. Ms. Sinclair?
Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we are here to talk about the public tree policy that was recently drafted. The city of Chanhassen values public trees and recognize the importance of trees in our city. Whether they are public trees or private trees, all trees provide economic, environmental and social benefits to the entire Chanhassen community. There are 7,000 trees that we have in our tree inventory. On the map, you can see this is a screenshot. Street trees are in red and park trees are in green. All of those trees have an impact on, you know, city labor, city resources, private properties when trees fail and often create questions for the city staff and work to be done. The policy that we put together was established or was created by a group of city staff from various departments talking about the different issues and procedures and practices that they employ kind of on a daily, annual, even longer basis. And the questions that we get from the public, it's been difficult in the past to just say, well, that's the way it is. That's the way we've always done it. So it's nice to have a written policy that establishes exactly what our standard specifications and responsibilities are for public trees. And we will, the policy will aid in being transparent for the public and provide consistency for city staff. The policy addresses issues such as right-of-way clearance requirements, storm damage, who's responsible in those situations, and as well as protection of public trees. I'm thinking this could be a working document. And in the future, we can kind of start to establish maybe tree planting goals or other issues with public trees that we want to address. The, again, the policy is kind of a consolidation of all the different issues that have been brought up through public questions and just through daily workloads for city staff and deciding as a group, what is the best management practices, best practices for public trees in our city. Hopefully, you all had a chance to read through it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments.
Perfect. Ms. Sinclair, any questions? So I know this is, I, I really appreciate you putting this together for clarification because I know we get a lot of questions from residents about what is their responsibility, what the city's responsibility for. So, you know, I appreciate having some clarity around that so we can direct them to a certain place where they can read about it and understand. One of the biggest questions is tree trimming. And, you know, I know it's in the eye of the beholder of what's the right way and what's the wrong way. Will we do any type of communication with this policy for all of our residents?
So it, it would be published on our city website. We haven't really talked about how we would promote this exists.
Yep.
But I think, again, we do get a lot of inquiries at the city and whether it's myself or streets or parks or planning or whatever department to be able to refer people to this document to answer questions.
Perfect. I think that, go ahead.
Mayor and council, I just want to add to that. I think you took an important step at your last meeting when you approved a contract for additional tree trimming that will allow us to get caught up on some workload backlog.
Yeah, and I mean, which is great. And I'm thinking of other ones where they might be blocking, you know, lights and, you know, vantage points and, and different things. And I just think it's really important that there's that consistent message from all departments that there is going to be that one place. And that's why I appreciate you doing this, that it's not if you go to one person, they get told something and then, you know, depending on who they talk to. So I really appreciate having this formalized for the best communication for residents that want a tree trimmed or removed and whose responsibility, I mean, I think of storms as well and whose responsibility it is to, to remove trees. So thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome. And you're right, in the past, it could be kind of subjective as to what the city would do in certain situations, depending on who you would talk to.
Yes, yeah. I know we're always wanting to make it right for everyone. So that was not a negative, but a positive. But it's just nice to have a consistent policy to refer to. So I appreciate it. If there are any further questions or comments, if anyone wants to make a motion, please. And I think that is in your packet. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that the Chanhassen City Council adopts the public tree policy.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Ms. Sinclair, I'm guessing you're still going.
Still am. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So now we're going to talk a little bit more about trees. And we are going to talk about updating our Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan. Just interesting side note, I was looking at a previous when we first adopted the management plan. It was brought to the city council exactly six years ago today.
No way.
Way. May 23rd, 2016 is when we first.
That was a very official statement, by the way.
Yeah. All right, so just a quick, quick refresher about what is EAB? Emerald Ash Bore is an invasive insect. It was first discovered in Detroit in 2002, most likely brought in on packaging from Asia. And that's an international port there. So they figure it was there for quite a while before they discovered it in 2002. So it was probably back in the 90s, actually. And Emerald Ash Bore kills all types of ash trees. Green, black and white are the three types of ash that we have here in, in Minnesota. In Chanhassen, it is mostly green ash. We do have some white ash planted around. Black ash is pretty rare. That is very, very common up north. We have, I think, the highest number of ash population in the country. So Minnesota is very much at risk from Emerald Ash Bore. And even though mountain ash is a tree that sounds like it would be in the group, it is a different species. So it doesn't affect mountain ash. And the Emerald Ash Bore affects the phloem tissue of a tree, which is this vascular tissue right underneath the bark. And when it disrupts that tissue, you get crown dieback, as shown in that picture. So we have lots of green bugs. Emerald Ash Bore is named that because of its emerald green color. But there's lots of green bugs. And for years now, I've gotten reports, I've gotten baggies of bugs quite often during the summer of really responsible, attentive residents who were worried that we had had it. And so as you can see, some of these books, bugs might look familiar to you because they are very common. Emerald Ash Bore is a very tiny, tiny insect. And it would be unusual and maybe perhaps lucky to actually see one in person. But more often than not, they're, you know, 60 feet into the air in a canopy and really tiny. So you don't actually see them that often. You will see the larvae, though, because it's the larvae that affects the trees by boring and tunneling through that phloem tissue. Right now is the time when larvae is emerging as adults from the bark, from the trunks of trees. They go through a life cycle where the adults are out feeding and then laying eggs on the trees. The larvae hatch within the tree and then tunnel within that phloem section over winter and then again emerge the following spring. So they're also finding that in Minnesota with our winters, EAB may have a one or two-year life cycle. And so the University of Minnesota, you can see in the upper corner here, much like Oakwild, has an active season. And so right now, starting May 1st through October 1st, we are in active season for Emerald Ash Bore. So this is just quick. They deregulated Emerald Ash Bore as an, at a national level last year in 2021. So this map is the latest. It hasn't been updated. But you can see it's, it's well situated throughout the entire eastern US and into eastern Canada as well. So January 2021 was when it was confirmed in Chanhassen. So in 2016, when we first talked about putting together a plan, our closest infested tree was down in Shakopee, about 10 miles as the crow flies. Now we are within the infested area. We have infested trees. This is a park in Chaska that is quite infested. We have more trees than what are shown on here. At this point, the Department of Ag is kind of being a little bit more casual about putting infested trees on there just because there are so many of them. So this is just kind of a, a larger scale picture of where we kind of sit in all of this. Here we are in Carver County and here we are in Chanhassen. Here we are in Carver County, and here we are in Chan Hassen. And you can see, it's just slowly kind of spread out from the original infestation found in St. Paul in 2009. So, lucky for us, we have had all these years to kind of put together a plan and start our preventive practices, and we've been luckier than some other communities. So, signs of EAB, what are we going to see when we have an infested tree? Well, there is bark splitting. There are these exit holes from larvae that is exiting as an adult. But what you're going to see is this flecking that's shown on the trunk of the tree and these dime-sized woodpecker holes. And in a lot of trees in town, you will very easily see this now. It's been a little strange to go from, we couldn't find any EAB in town, to having a positive in January of 2021, then driving around with representatives from the Department of Ag, looking for infested trees, finding a few more just outside of the initial core infestation, to now finding trees that, you know, because of the amount of damage on the tree, you know that that tree has been infested for about four to five years. So it's very, very, very difficult to see those early one-to-two-year attacks on a tree. You're going to see it at about three to five years, so, and that's what we're seeing now. Again, what's the symptoms of the signs is what we're going to see from the insect. The symptoms is what happens to the tree because of the insect, and we're going to get this crown dieback and eventual death. This is, I think, from a tree care company, just showing the difference between a tree that has been chemically protected to a tree that was not, is now infested with EAB. So, chemical protection does work. So this is a chart put together with how the intensity of EAB kind of ramps up because the populations will grow exponentially. So, we are sitting in this kind of five to six, probably four to five-year range where, you know, just a few years back, we really had no inkling of any tree damage. We're now starting to see a noticeable uptick in infested trees. That noticeable uptick will become absolutely obvious, and we will kind of create or begin to turn into this kind of very intense period of infestations and dead ash trees around town. So, why did we need a management plan? Well, we all needed to agree on what our strategy was going to be because it's going to be a heavy lift to accomplish everything. A very important component of that was going to be education out to the public, education of city staff and city leaders. We are now doing the inspection component of that, where we are actively looking for infested trees, contacting property owners about those trees. And then finally, our best management practices, you know, doing a multi-pronged approach to managing our trees, whether it's removal or chemical protection, and then if it's removal, then replanting and making sure that we plant diversity of species so that, again, we minimize any future impacts by introduced pests or diseases. The management plan also manages expectations. Again, it's going to be a heavy lift, so knowing that it's not all going to get done at once, it's going to take many, many years to kind of keep a somewhat of a control on the ash, Emerald Ash Bore issue. And also that we have a uniform response, much like the tree policy, just so we all have the same answer for what is going on and what can the public expect from us. So, our components right now for our management plan was having a tree inventory, which we do have, and we update annually. We are actively inspecting, detecting, and monitoring those Emerald Ash Bore infestations in town. We have been, and I will continue to do tree removals, ash tree removals, and replanting. We are currently in a grant funding period from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to do 50 ash tree removals and replanting. That grant was for, I believe, $35,000. And again, you know, we're also matching that money, and that was 50 trees. So, we're talking significant budget over the course of many years of dealing with the EAB. We've also, we started treatments, chemical treatments of public ash trees in 2017. This plan was approved in 2016, and the following summer, we started treatments, and we currently have about 700 trees in our rotation. Wood disposal and utilization will become an issue. Currently, a lot of the wood has been going to, or from different communities, has been going to the energy incinerator in Minneapolis. They are actually kind of getting overwhelmed, so they're not accepting much anymore. But now with avian bird flu, many poultry farms need wood chips, so some wood is maybe being diverted to that. We probably will have to come up with alternatives for our wood. Again, kind of being at the, not at the forefront, we have somewhat of a luxury to kind of watch and wait and see how best to manage that. So, with education and outreach, we've been doing outreach consistently since 2017, 2016 to the public. There's still plenty of residents out there that haven't heard of Emerald Ash Bore, so we aren't letting up yet, and more will be done about that. And our ordinance and policy didn't address Emerald Ash Bore. That was changed, so that has been done. The one thing that we did have in our original plan that we, are the latest draft, the update I have taken out is the licensing and permitting. We had thought about maybe permitting and licensing tree care companies, but we'll get into that a little bit later. It doesn't seem like it would be a need of something we would need to do. Well, here we are. Licensing and permitting. So, all tree care companies have to register with the state. So, right now, if a homeowner needs to find a tree care company, they can go on the Department of Ag's site and look just for Carver County and for tree care companies and get a list of registered tree care companies that can help them with Emerald Ash Bore. So, we haven't had a request from the public. We haven't seen issues necessarily with any bad practices or bad work. So, I feel that this would just be staff time that isn't really needed, directed to something that isn't needed for the tree licensing and tree permitting. The chemical treatments, like I said, have been done on about 700 trees. We are in a three-year rotation. If you are going to treat your tree at your own home, it is recommended that you do a two-year rotation. We split it into three years to spread out the cost. As we get into the more steeper slope of the death curve, we may kind of sandwich that into a two-year rotation instead of three years because the intensity of attacks by Emerald Ash Bore may be a little bit more than what the chemical in the tree can handle, and so we may start seeing some damage to trees if we don't increase the rotation. So that is in the future, but most likely will need to happen. The insecticide that we specify in our contract is pollinator safe, and a trunk injection is environmentally safe. It doesn't leach into the ground or into the soil. It doesn't go into the air. It stays in the tree and is a fully contained system when they're applying it. And apparently, I cannot say it's 100% effective because nothing is 100%. It's 99% effective. The issue that we'll start to deal with more is the removal of infested trees. So, when EAB kills a tree, it dries out very, very quickly, which causes the tree to be brittle and become a hazardous tree in a short amount of time. So, this also means that our removals may be a little bit more expensive because you can't climb a tree, you have to always use equipment to take it down, and because you have to use equipment, sometimes we may have to take other trees down to get at the hazardous tree that needs to be taken down. So, not in every situation, but just knowing that ash tree removals are going to be numerous and potentially dangerous, and the trees themselves need to come down soon. So, all of those make for a very intense removal need in our city. So, in 2016, we had this to-do list that we needed to get done before Emerald Ash Bore destroys our city. The first one was to adopt a management plan, which we did. The next was to set guidelines for our treatment, which we did. We treat public trees that are 10 inches or larger in good, fair, good, or excellent condition, and everything else is scheduled to get removed. We did that. Tree removals, we are doing that. We have been doing that. We are continuing to do that. We have a prioritized list of getting trees down before they are infested. And again, it's trees that are damaged in some way or less than 10 inches. So, that's done. Chemical options, we have identified all the trees basically that need to be chemically protected. They're in a current rotation. The list from year to year may fluctuate maybe by 20 trees. Some are lost, others are kind of discovered, but basically have a kind of a set number of trees that we're treating and will continue to treat into the future. We did revise our ordinance to add EAB to the list of inspections that the city can inter-private property to look for and to ask residents to remove. And so, that ordinance was updated in 2017, I believe. So, the last item, and it's a new item added to the list, is to approve an updated management plan. And the updates you'll see are basically going from a future tense of when Emerald Ash Bore gets here to a present tense of now it is here, and this is what we're doing. So, there it is altogether. I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments you may have.
Any questions or comments? I have one, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, quick question. So, when we're walking around, we see those round metal tags on trees. Is that, can we look at that and tell when the tree was treated and what it was treated for?
Yes, I think by, well, for sure by the end of this year, you will know what year it was treated. The first tags that went on didn't have the year, but it had the name of the company and just identified, yes, that tree is chemically treated and protected against Emerald Ash Bore. But now, yeah, it says the name of the company, which is Rainbow Tree Care, and the year it was injected.
Okay, yeah, that's really interesting. Sometimes we see those, so we've kind of wondered if that's what that is. But I really appreciate the work you do keeping the trees looking beautiful here. I think it improves the quality of our life here and the walkability, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sinclair, I just have one question. Have you ever received any pushback from residents when you asked them to remove trees or cut them down or take them down?
So, let's see, March. March is the first letter I had to send out about, well, okay, no, I take that back. Last March was the first time when maybe three properties had to remove trees. And, no, there wasn't any pushback.
Okay.
The, the fact is, if they didn't take down those trees, those trees would fall down. They would definitely be dead, you know, within that season.
Right.
So, I think perhaps it helps that there's a little common sense, like these trees are dying anyway.
Right. Okay, and I appreciate, I know some of it was past tense to, you know, present tense and the language changed, but it was a good refresher for me to read it as well, just, you know, understanding the process and procedure of how, you know, someone has an infected tree, that, you know, the education and guiding and next steps, and there's resources available from the city. So, I just appreciate that that's all laid out very clearly for residents because otherwise, people might get concerned if they can't afford to do something at a certain time, but there's enough lead time for them to understand what's going on.
Yes, let me just put a little caveat on that. So, the, like last year, those first letters that went out, it was one tree that was infested in their yard. I have now visited this year multiple properties that have 12, 15 infested trees, potentially every tree on their property. So, those are very, those are very hard visits to make.
Yep.
So, like I said, it's, we're just at the start.
Right.
Of what, I mean, and again, maybe people get used to it really quickly because it's going to be everywhere. But, yeah, it's hard for the, for the initial.
Yep.
Kind of wave.
Yep, I can imagine because it's not cheap. So, I appreciate some of the, you know, the assistance that the city provides, so.
Which is all the more reason why we really push people to protect their trees. It is the most economical and effective way to manage the ash trees because you're right, there is, there are no bargains for tree removal.
No, absolutely not. Well, I appreciate, I share Councilwoman Ream's appreciation for the hard work that you do and put into the city of making it look beautiful. And in addition to that, really educating our residents, I know how many people call you out and ask questions, so I appreciate you taking the time to help residents kind of figure out what's going on on their property. So, thanks for the work that you do.
Thank you.
I have one.
Sure, I'm sorry.
I'm just staring this way.
Is it more expensive for residents to remove an infested tree than, you know, just taking down an average tree?
Potentially, yes. Because, again, you know, tree care companies, by and large, will not climb those trees. They want to use equipment, and so, yeah, to finagle a truck in there, and if they can't get a truck, then it might have to be a crane, which is very expensive, you know? So, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty tough for some.
So, how does that, I mean, you said you haven't had a lot of pushback so far, but in those cases, if you're talking about, you know, 10, 15 trees or, you know, it is a significant expense. What if the property owner says, no, I can't do it right now?
Well, our city code says that we issue them a citation, you know? I would rather not. I mean, the fact remains, it's going to be a very dangerous tree to have in their yard. And so, I suppose they could be obstinate, and maybe we don't want to be such a bad guy as to be fining them on top of the fact that they have to be paying for a removal. But ultimately, the issue will resolve itself.
Right. Do they, are they required to notify their neighbors, or does the city notify their neighbors that, you know, a tree in their neighborhood or, you know, next to them has been?
You know, we haven't done that yet. I have been thinking about that. Yeah, I mean, if, I guess I would ask you. If you were a neighbor, would you want to know that your neighbor, that your next door?
I would think so because then, you know, if it is this significant expense, you could be like, well, you know, I do the inventory, I have ash in my yard, I wasn't proactive, didn't treat them, I should probably be planning for a $10,000 expense in the next two years. didn't treat them, I should probably be planning for a $10,000 expense in the next two years, you know, something like that.
Yeah, and perhaps that's maybe more motivating than just a general statement of, E A B is here, you need to manage your trees. Like, maybe that's just a little too, like, it seems more immediate if, like, my neighbor has it.
Yeah, or it's, it's two blocks away, it's coming for you, you know?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I like that.
Yeah, the bugs climbing all over the house. But yeah, ma- maybe that would, I would want to know, but I don't know what others.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, not identify the neighbor, but that it's in your neighborhood.
We wouldn't.
I just want to be clear. But I think, I think that's a great idea, it'd be really helpful.
All right, we better heat up our printing press, because there's going to be a lot going on.
That's true.
Getting really good at postcards.
Good.
Good thought, very good thought. Any other questions or comments or motion? I see you.
Can I just make one more?
Sure, of course.
So if my neighbor has Emerald Ash Boror, can I apply the treatment in hopes of preventing it? Is that the case? And if, or can you apply it and the bugs would, or the Emerald Ash Boror would die? I mean, how soon do you need to apply it to get the prevention?
Yeah, so the treatments only occur basically during the summer. They only occur when the tree is fully leafed out and actively growing, basically transporting water nutrients up. You can treat any ash tree, and it will kill all the Emerald Ash Boror in that tree. They recommend that trees that have 30% or more damage in the canopy aren't really worth treating. Like, the canopy is, you know, you have, you know, maybe 60% of the canopy left, so whatever state that tree is in is basically kind of where it's going to be. Killing the E A B isn't going to make the tree look better, it's already damaged. Do you see what I'm saying? So, yeah, you could treat your tree if it only had half of its canopy, and you would kill all the E A B, but it's not a very good-looking tree, and it probably isn't worth it to do it then. But catching it early on, when you just have minor damage, maybe just a few visual symptoms that the signs that the tree is infested, yeah, I would, I would treat it then. And I would also say, like, if your neighbor has E A B, you could almost be 99% confident that your tree probably has E A B in it somewhere, even if you can't see any damage. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I probably should add, so as part of our contract for treating our public trees, we require the contractor to provide a, kind of a wholesale discount rate for residents. So that is offered to any Chan Hassen residents to use. I don't know if, because that is a, you know, publicly known number, if there's other tree care companies that offer a lesser rate. So I do always still say, you know, you can call a few different tree care companies to see if they have a lower application rate than, than what our company is offering. But, yeah, it is by far a cheaper alternative than removal.
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair. I'd entertain a motion, please. I guess, Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion that the Chan Hassen City Council approves the updated Emerald Ash Boror management plan. Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries 5-0. And last, but not least, who's doing, Mr. Howley, are you doing the Minnetonka Middle School West Roundabout update?
Yes, I am, Madam Mayor. Mayor Council, so I've got a quick PowerPoint here. Last November, towards Thanksgiving, I gave a PowerPoint presentation on this. I just deleted a bunch of those slides, and I want to give you an update and maybe get some direction from how you guys would like us to proceed on this endeavor. So I'm going to talk about Middle School West improvements. Again, just a snapshot of the proposed improvements, which is adding a roundabout on Drum Highway 41 at their driveway entrance. Overall project cost about 2.8 million. North is to the right. Updates from that time, the first bullet is that we did have a meeting with staff at the school district. They brought kind of the question of the project and the funding gap to a board study session. It was at the end of April, and the superintendent reported back that they don't have support for the project in roundabout way. So the funding, so the funding still needs to be resolved. I created this slide to, you know, reinforce the point that
Street joke.
we do have impacts to surrounding residential neighborhoods that are still, you know, actively being managed, and we're getting complaints and discussions. And the areas really, to talk about, oops, that's not going to work. Is this section of Melody Hill is currently parked as restricted to one side of the street only. We don't hear too much noise from this area, but we do know anecdotally that people do, parents pick off, drop off, do actually go all the way down here to, it's called Chaska Road or something. This portion of Murray Hill Road currently is not restricted in any way, shape, or form. We do know that parents actively drop off and pick off here because this is the old water tower site, and there's access, and you can actually see the worn grass of the field. And we are getting complaints from this neighborhood. And then Brendan Court is currently restricted, no parking on both sides of the street, which we get enough, you know, enforcement complaints on that alone, but the end result is that the pickup and drop off legally is now happening on Lake Lucy Road, the same project we were just talking about, the same kind of, not where we want people to, you know, have those types of operations. So in essence, we've got issues surrounding the school that are a challenge for the city that, that the school district really operationally should, should be part of the, part of the solution, if you will. So the up, the update here is then to consider what sort of outreach steps should we do as a city to, to keep the project afloat, to gain traction, to gain support. And we thought that the, the first thing we could do is draft a letter to the school board, I had, I drafted that in your packet, and then we could copy that letter to various other people or organizations to try to spread the word. But it was a pretty pointed letter, I'm sure you've read it, and I would like any feedback on if we should send that letter, if it needs to be edited in any way, we'll put it on the letterhead. But it's really saying, hey, come on, we need, we need some action here. So if, if you're not going to support the project, well, then we better, well, think about alternatives. And we haven't really had that kind of dialogue to date. As a reminder, the project costs 2.8 million, the unfunded portion is really only 400,000, so it's a relatively small portion of the overall buy. But the point of the slide here is that the state earmark that was approved last year's legislative session, this 1.5 million, that has an expiration date, right? So if we need, if we want to align our, our MinDOT competitive grant that we successfully got two years ago that had declined, and I've verbally been told from MinDOT that it's a very supportive project, and we're likely to be successful again, next year would be the last cycle where those two funding sources would align to actually build or construct a project in '24. And then we have some C I P money in there to help, help our share as much as we could. But again, it's aligning those funding sources before, you know, it goes away. That's the point of going through that slide. Overall schedule, what I did is these are the same dates as before. I added that we did meet with ISD 276 staff two months ago. Next steps are to do some outreach, work with the school district on some sort of mitigation of the neighborhood parking, and then next year submit the L P P application, design next year, and construct in '24. So with that, looking for comments, direction, questions on the letter, or is there a different sort of outreach we need to do? I will say that on this slide, you'll see that the city funded the original traffic study, $6,500, and then we also, on the original L P P application, that was 8,000 that we spent to do that, so we've got some money invested beyond staff time. The consultant could create a visualization, visualization model of the roundabout to maybe help show the school district that it will work, because I think one of their issues is, well, might, we don't even know it's going to work. But that's, you know, $7,500 more, so that's additional money that, that somebody would have to pay for. So we paused and said, no, but it's an option on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Howley. Lots of questions, all right. Councilman Campion.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing when I read that, you know, where they said, it just doesn't make sense to us, you know, we think it'll make it worse. Well, it, it does seem like a, a simple simulation or model can show you that this is, this is a situation now, and, you know, the traffic model shows this, and if you change it to a roundabout, it now does that, and it is better, you know, what, you know, and there's a new superintendent.
Starting July.
Or, or starting, you know, soon, you know, could that, you know, taking another whack at it, you know, well, when he's fresh, you know, maybe worthwhile, and I don't know if there's a cheaper way to get a visualization or simulation of that than, you know, the 7,500 option, but something like that that they can visually see, you know, this is, this is the current situation, this would be the situation with the roundabout, it's hard to deny that.
Councilman McDonald?
Thank you. Mr. Howley, could you go back to the map that shows where the parking and everything? Yeah, that one. I got two questions. Why is ISD 276 not supportive of the project? I wouldn't think you would have to go through all that, I mean, they live up there, they go through it on a daily basis. What's the rationale for not supporting the project?
Mayor Council, what we were, I guess, told verbally on our team's call that we had with them was that it's a small amount of time that the problem exists, maybe 15 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes in the afternoon, and I'm kind of paraphrasing They think that just managing it, actively managing it with, you know, the police directing traffic solves the problem. And why would any entity spend 2.8 million dollars to solve a problem that doesn't exist? They acknowledge that parents are parking in these neighborhoods, but their response to that is, it's a public street, they can do it. So we really don't care, is, is what they kind of told us. But they really think that they've done everything they can onsite, and the problem is not an inconvenience enough that it, that it's a priority.
Okay, and then that brings up my next question. How does the roundabout solve this parking of, of the parents on, on public streets? Is it a flow problem, or how, how does that solve that?
Mayor Council, so I guess the, the philosophy is that the, the people are using these surrounding neighborhood streets because they don't want to go into the parking lot because they can't get back out efficiently or safely. They just go to these little streets, the, their, their kid can run across and jump in, and then they're out of there. They don't want the hassle of the queue that, the exiting queue of their school driveway and wait there for, I don't know, 15 minutes, and then when they get there, have to like break to the left and dodge traffic, right? So if the roundabout does what it's supposed to do and, and maintain the access in and out, just like any roundabout does, it keeps everything moving, people aren't stopped, those inconveniences of the parents that are utilizing these city streets would go back to picking them up at the school, because they can get in and out of there efficiently. I think people just don't like to, to wait.
And you've got models, I take it, that show all of this?
That's what the traffic study looked at, and that's what that visualization model would show you on a, like an image, and it would show all the moving cars. But the, the traffic study showed that it would mitigate the problem.
Okay, and the school district saw the traffic study, and their response is that, eh, it's only 15, 20 minutes, two times a day.
Paraphrasing.
Yeah, and additionally, Councilman McDonald, Dr. Peterson does not believe that school districts fund road projects. So that was one of the objections to, early on to, to this, but prior to that, he also lobbied, the school board lobbied to get the legislature to get the additional funding from the state. So it's gone through a couple iterations over the past couple of years.
Okay, didn't we also try to get a traffic light there at one time?
As part of that study, they, the, the engineer looked at either a roundabout or traffic signal. They not, will not put a signal there.
Yeah. I don't know what to tell you, I mean, as Councilman Campion stated, you know, if you send the current letter, well, you're probably not going to make any friends. I, I don't know what to tell you. I, I mean, it, it's something that's definitely of benefit to the school, I mean, to the safety of students, parents, you know, the neighborhood. I, I don't know what to tell you. You know, if, if that's the decision that they make, it looks as though it's, it's become a political decision, and people need to run for the school board.
Councilwoman Ream, did you have a comment that you want to? I thought I saw you motion towards the microphone earlier.
Uh, no, not right now, I don't have a comment, thank you. I have a question. For the vehicles waiting along Lake Lucy Road, does that mean students are walking across people's private property to get to school, or how are they, they going through the woods?
There is a, a path through here
Okay.
that I don't believe is private property, so
Okay.
there's a little sidewalk connection there. So then they get to the street, they walk down the street, and then down to get picked up there.
Okay. Yeah, I, I hate spending more money, but, I mean, if we think that visualization would be able to help further along conversation, I think this is a, I think this is a big enough problem, and I don't want to lose out on state aid to fund it. Yeah. I thought the letter was great. In terms of kind of timing for this, I think we're running up against a little bit of a challenge with the summer months. One of the, the group that initiated this whole project was the P T O president, and in working with the previous principal at M M W, that was kind of how this all started, and so there was a lot of momentum there, there's been changes. I think the P T O is probably a great advocate for getting this letter too. Unfortunately, they just had their last meeting of the year just this past week, so I don't, I mean, we can still get it in the hands, and they could probably distribute it, I don't know how much momentum we would get. I think with a new superintendent, there's a lot to juggle right away, and probably a little bit risky to put that on him, to overturn what was already discussed by another, you know, the, by Dr. Peterson, and then try to undo that right away. I think there might be a, a better strategy of tackling this in the fall. I know that makes timelines really tight, or even end of summer while they're starting to ramp up. I think that's probably, in terms of timing, a little bit better. I do think it's worth pursuing, but I just think that it's a bigger problem. I think the roundabout helps, but they have to do some management just within the parking lot alone, and they need some engineer help on how to facilitate the traffic flow, because if it's stopped in the parking lot, it's going to stop, be stopped on the roundabout. And so I think that they just need some help, kind of looking at other outlets and avenues. kinda looking at other outlets and avenues, and maybe a superintendent, a new superintendent and new set of eyes on it would help that in addition to the roundabout, so, um, I appreciate the letter, but I just think that we have to be a little more strategic in terms of the timing to gather support, so, would be my thoughts. Um, do you need a, you don't need a motion, just direction? Any other comments or questions? Thoughts on ta, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, can we have another meeting to talk with MnDOT and the superintendent, um, I mean, would that get us any farther if we looked at the way they were looking at it, and then, I don't know, tried to have a meeting of the minds to come up with new solutions, or is that something that you feel is already been exhausted, all of our options?
Uh, Mayor Council, I, I think there's been enough of those types of meetings, I, I could maybe see the strategy that we pause, we wait till the fall, let the new superintendent get settled in, to him, it'll be fresh, we send the letter, um, we say, we would amend the letter and add language to, we, we'd certainly be open to setting up another meeting to go over, you know, the issues and, and any solutions, um, and maybe we say we'd be happy to, to do the simulation and split the cost with you, maybe put that into the letter, um, which, for that amount of money, I don't, I don't know why they would say no, but, um, maybe we could do that.
I guess my thought is, maybe if we could bring in another traffic calming expert, or someone else new to the meeting that might be able to help come up with new ideas, I don't know, that would be possible, but, um, maybe not a meeting with just the same people, but maybe add an additional traffic calming expert, if that's a possibility?
Uh, Mayor Council, e, hmm, maybe, I don't, I personally don't know that the engineering is the issue, and you bring in a new consultant, number one, you're gonna have to pay them, or they're gonna have to get up to speed, um, and then you've, you've messaged to the existing consultant that, "Thanks, but no thanks", right? Um, I, maybe, maybe, um, fundamentally, I don't think it's the consultant's concept that's the issue.
Councilwoman Ream, there was, um, in the initial meeting, as we were discussing this, two people from, one from MnDOT, also legislators that sit on the transportation group, um, and are involved with Safe Walks to School, and so, I mean, it was a very, like, a fully vetted process early on, that's why when this all of a sudden came to a screeching halt, it was very surprising, um, but they are very specific on what they would be able to do and not be able to do because of its proximity to Highway seven, they realize that, um, in the morning and afternoon, the traffic is backed up onto Highway seven, the turn lanes are backed up on Highway seven, and they recognize all of it, but there's just really not a lot that they can do because of the proximity, and that's why they had suggested the roundabout, was because that way it allowed for continued traffic flow versus any kind of light, um, they were involved with that crosswalk and the widening of the road there, um, and so they, they really were involved early on in this discussion, um, it really, just the objection came when the school district decided that they didn't want to participate in the last portion of, with the funding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is it a funding issue more than a feasibility issue? I mean, is it a matter of four hundred thousand dollars is what they're objecting to?
It was, I mean, the, the comment was that they, the school district does not pay for street projects, so, um, so that was kind of, but that had evolved from the beginning conversation, so I don't wanna just, that's not the, the law by any means, and so, um, and I don't know how it was presented to the school board, I know the PTO was very passionate about it, cause it's the number one, um, response that they get in parent feedback forms, is the traffic of pickup and drop off is the number one complaint that they receive, so, um, that's why they wanted to do something to address it, and then, you know, to Mr. Howley's point, it's not only the roundabout, but, um, you know, kind of addressing some of the street parking has been a challenge as well, so, um, anyways, but, thank you for bringing it back up, and if you have any other thoughts, Council, about, you know, about this, you know, please share that with Mr. Howley, and we can just kind of look at a strategy in terms of timing and points of contact, and maybe tackle it late summer, early fall.
Okay, th- thank you, Madam Mayor Council, I just, you know, wanna make sure not, we're not se- sending the wrong tone, right? We wanna be partners.
Yep.
Um, engaged partners, so, I just, I wanna be cautious of that, which is the whole point of, of us bringing it to you tonight.
Yep, appreciate it. All right, well, thank you for that, uh, next, any council presentations this evening? I don't see anything, anything administratively. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schubert, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ream, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries five zero, we are adjourned.